Not only, look at this, even strobes. Okay, there we go. Welcome and happy Thanksgiving, I'm just saying. Oh yeah, well, anyway, welcome to tonight's board of education meeting for November 20th, 2025, and please call the roll.
Dr. Fisher is absent. Mrs. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mrs. Rigano?
Here.
And Mr. Taylor?
I'm here.
Please stare for the flash.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion, a second, to approve the agenda presented.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? No, nothing, okay.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigano?
Yes. And we're into presentations.
Yes, we have three presentations this evening. The first one is our school spotlight, and we're spotlighting Traybine Elementary. Mrs. Walk was not able to join us tonight, but she had sent Mr. Jason Stripe, so I'd like to invite Jason to come on up. Jason is our STEM expert. He works at Traybine, or between Traybine and Ankeny, so we're glad to have Jason here.
Hey, Jason.
Hey.
How are you?
I'm good. All right, so to get just started, before I get, I want you guys to have a little experience before we run the video. So I've got, these are called Indie Cars. This is early coding, so our kindergarten through third grade is primarily who's using this. But we have these color, color mats.
I saw this on Facebook.
Did you see?
Yeah, well, because where's Beth Sizer? She's always got something out in her school history. Yes, thank you.
So, real quick, each color has means something. So green is go. I'm gonna say purple, because I'm gonna let you, you, because I want the reaction. It's gonna be awesome. So green is go, and so the kids, what they do is they lay these down. They're learning sequencing, and they're learning how to code at the same time. So, the greens go, and then it gets to purple. Which is celebrate, so the kids love it.
I love it!
And, and that's just a taste of what, what, what we're doing in that tree. So, our toys away.
We like the toys!
So, just a reminder, what, what we're doing is this is part of the Dodea STEM Grant K8. Of course, for myself, K5, and I'm also at Ankeny. Key points, students will be engaged in increased understanding of STEM. Teachers will also learn along the way. So I go into every classroom at Traybine, 45 minutes every other week. And we have a highly engaged lesson for them. And this going, you know, 2028 through, sorry, last through the 2028-29 school year. Myself, and then we have three other folks who are throughout the district in this STEM program. So, what is a STEM teacher? Adding enrichment through real-world problems, connecting to all subject areas, building grit and teamwork skills, which is something that we're starting right there in kindergarten, and they're working on through that all the way through fifth grade. And it's, it's amazing. You can see the, the kids are working together. They're learning how to work through different opinions. So it's, it's, it's cool. Every day, something new. So some of the materials that we have used so far is the Indie, which you guys have got to use, Bolt. It's kind of like a robot. And there's a video you'll see a little bit of the kids learning, how they learned how to easy code and let it go. So you'll, you'll see the video of that. Then also Blueprint, you know, we used to have like Lincoln Logs, somebody, some people may have used that, and Connects. So Blueprint is the next step up. You can then use it into Spiros and Spiro Bolts and the whole, whole thing. And then we also have pairing with the Chromebooks, and called CM Labs, where they learn input, output. So really great stuff. So this group here was, they figured it out pretty quickly, brought their friends over, and I was like, okay, we gotta, we gotta film this. So you can see the excitement. And each color tells the car a different way, so they're, they got a problem solved. Later on, in the next lesson, we also did sequencing of stories. So we have pictures from the story of the timeline of the story, and they put that in with these color mats, so that then they could tell the story. And I kind of used the premise of, hey, how, how many of you have been to Kings Island, where you rode the ride, that's inside, and you get to see the different things? So they loved it, it was great. Some more pictures there of the kids doing the sequencing. So they're, they're highly engaged. What's so great, what's so great about these is, any of these, and you'll see a little, little bit here, we may start with the coding, but then we're gonna connect it with hands-on creating stuff. I have a cart of stuff, and I'm like, okay, you're gonna create something, and then you're gonna attach one of these to it. And so we're, we're taking that technology, but we're also going backwards. A lot of people want hands-on, kids, kinesthetic, learning how to cut, tape, and they're working together at the same time. So, some further STEM explorations we've done. Kindergarten, we did Goldilocks and Three Bears. So they had to create a bed for Goldilocks. I had a little, little Goldilocks, and so once they did it, we put it on there, see if it could stay. If it was, we'd be like, just right. If it not, then it would fall off. So that's, that was my word for the, for the week, was just right. Pumpkin, we had a pumpkin scenario where they had a, there's a story with the eyes, the story left me, but they had some eyeballs, and you had a stack of, who could get the stack, stack the eyeballs the most? Fifth grade, they had pumpkin carts. So they had designed a pumpkin cart, and then the Spiro Bolt would, could pull it. These, these folk, these kids here were very successful. Stacking, putting a pumpkin, holding it up. And so this was a successful group. All they had was 10 straws and tape. So you could see they even had a little design thing, too. The group behind them was very funny. They were afraid people might see what they're doing, so they put the little boards up to make sure that they were good. And another Goldilocks and Three Bears. So this week has been a blast for Thanksgiving, great connections. So kindergarten, turkey race. We read, had the book, The Great Turkey Race Red. Traditional turkey hand, trace your hand, color it, cut it out. So then the teacher and I had balloons on the zip line, and we raced. So, so it was great, kids loved it. And then the Spiro, the Spiro Indie Cars, second through, I'm sorry, first through third grade, we connected to Balloons Over Broadway, talked about parades, and Macy's Day Parade. And so then they had to create their own balloon club. This group here, mind you, they only had 20, 25 minutes. This group here did the Grinch, that Grinch turned out really well. And they only, like I said, they had 20 minutes to do that. Fourth and fifth grade used the Blueprint, and they had to, they put together a spinner, and then they had to, on there, they had Thanksgiving sides. So they spun it to what kind of sides you have. We had drinking gravy, we had, you know, kids get creative. And another kindergarten there. And so, here's a...
It's a McDonald's.
Towards the end, here we had two great classes.
I said nothing, that was gonna work.
You know, the last thing, your final interpretation. Santa. And then of course, it was great. The very last ones, he said, Santa Claus.
It's like stopping to get presents. Eat the chicken out! It's the moment.
All the way! Here comes Santa!
It's like Santa's dropping to drop off presents.
Why do you say Santa?
All right, so STEM testimonials, you know, I think it's always important to, what are the kids say about this? So I interviewed kids K through five, and here's what they have to say.
I like the little cars that Mr. Stem brought.
All right. Do you play with it?
I liked when we did, when we did the little beds from last time. Little beds from the three, three little bears.
Yeah, cool. And, go ahead.
I'm in first grade, and I like Indie Cars.
Okay, all right.
My name is Star, I'm in Ms. Fisher's second grade class. Today I'm gonna tell you what STEM means. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. In STEM, we get to explore, try new things, and have fun being created. Here are a couple things done in, we have done with Mr. Stripe. We made robots do cool things like stop, go, and dance. Class, in class, we made carrot cages from the book. We learned how to turn lights on using computers. Thanks for listening.
Thank you so much.
I am Landon, I'm in the third grade. My favorite thing so far in STEM is I get to create cool things, and have engineering to make my brain get smarter, and be more creative.
All right, thank you, Landon.
I'm in fourth grade.
So why do you like STEM?
I like STEM because it teaches me a lot about how this some technology works, and how to use it in like, a lot of different ways. And it shows you how things work, like how do you make it, and how this like stuff get them. Like, for example, you get a light sensor, and you get a light, it senses how much light, from like, from zero to 100 from an area.
All right, well, thank you so much, Cal.
I am, and I'm in fifth grade, and I really like STEM because it's very enjoying. It's nice, and it likes to give me new ideas for my new start in school, and for all the new things I will be doing.
And lastly, to finish up, I was talking to Mrs. Pleasance a couple weeks ago, and she had this, pretty much what she has here. And I said, hey, I'm presenting, could you, could you remember what you're saying? She's like, hey? So she sent me an email, and I copied and pasted what she had, because I was like, that was really good. So I think this is a great testimonial of what we're doing at Traybine, working together, and, and bridging, as I mentioned, we're literally not only figuratively bridging, but we're literally building a bridge to all the different connections of our curriculum and beyond. So it's, it's a real pleasure to, to be able to be in this position, and represent Traybine, and showing the good things that we're doing. So, thank you, guys. Great job.
How long are your classes?
Our classes are 45 minutes. And so, you got a little five-minute buffer, so Tuesdays are my busy day. I'm in fifth grade land, and then I end up in 41 class, and then I end up in second grade. And then, so I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of steps in.
So how do you transport your material around?
Oh yeah, I have a cart, a little cart with, just like a cafeteria cart, as you could call it. Yeah, it does have an M on it, and some of the kids are like, thinking I'm a Michigan fan, so I need to get a red marker.
Fame on you!
Jason, if I may, I want to, I want to thank you for obviously the excellent job you're doing with the young people. I don't know if you know this or not, but Jason, before here, he was the director of Starbase, which is the education outreach program through Wright Patterson Air Force Base. And so he made that, that program very successful. And I want to thank Joy in Beaver Creek City Schools, because we serve as the fiscal agent for this program. So very, very much to be proud of.
Jason did a great job at Starbase, because I went there to serve. That was a fun day.
Yeah.
And I know I spoke to teachers and kids that went, because I had third grade, we didn't go. But it was a great experience for our kids.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of those things I've learned from there, I'm able to apply to what we're doing currently, and, and share it with, with everyone. So it's, it's a, it's a great experience, and I'm having a blast, so it's...
Thank you for what you do for our kids.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, Jason, appreciate it.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You just sing?
Okay, our next presentation for this evening is we're gonna provide the board with an update regarding our strategic plans. I'll turn it over to Dr. Fiori at this point.
Our strategic plan, this is the last year of our current strategic plan, so many of the projects and initiatives within the plan have been accomplished. However, I wanted to provide you an update on where we're at with all of those different, there's five themes in our strategic plan, and I want to talk a little bit about each one of them, so you know kind of where we're at this year in terms of what we're finishing up as we embark on writing some new goals and objectives moving forward. So the five areas, just to, as a, as a reminder, are teaching and learning, whole-child development, operational excellence, identity and culture development, and college career and community engagement. So to start with, teaching and learning. Our first goal under teaching and learning, there's three under each of these areas. The first one is realizing portrait of a graduate. And what we looked at when we got together as a team is, we didn't want it to look, we didn't want it to just be about graduates, we wanted it to be about our entire, the whole K-12, pre-K-12 spectrum. So we changed it to portrait of a learner, because it's really the skills and the values, and what we want each kid to have when they leave us, but they're gonna develop it their whole career in Beaver Creek. So if you could click on that mic, this is what our portrait of a learner looks like. If you remember, in our strategic plan, we had the Go Creek values. And our team, when we got together to talk about it, those really embody what we want our students to have. The skills we want them to possess as they leave and go off into careers or college. So if you look, there's the globally aware, optimistic, confident, resilient, engaged, excellence, and kind. So that is our portrait of a learner that we have been working under. Some, if you want to go back, Mike. Something that is you, unique is, we have lots of teams that meet, we have a character ed committee. We've had character ed for a very long time, it's a pillar of our school district. But what we started looking at is, how do we kind of merge our portrait of a learner and our character education? So that, because they all really align. A lot of the character pillars also are embedded into the Go Creek Portrait of a Learner. So those teams kind of merged, looked at how do they align? So we're all working towards the same, they're not separate things, they're all, you know, they're aligned together. So I think that's been really good. Something that our teams are working on is, where do we teach these values and these, you know, these skills we want kids to have, and then how do we recognize them for it? So those are things that we're working on with our Portrait of a Learner team. College readiness planning team, this... College readiness planning team, this team is, it meets each year. One of the things that came out of this team is the Sinclair Associates Pathway. When I presented the Program of Studies last year, something that we embedded in that is, if kids are taking CCP classes, that has a pathway for them, that they can obtain an associate's degree, so outlines it more, like these are the classes you need to take. We're also partnering with the National Math and Science Institute, and what they, they really emphasize getting the skills kids need to take those AP Advanced Placement classes. So preparing more kids to be ready to take those classes, which can, you know, if you score a certain thing on the AP exam, you don't have to take the college class, so that's really good. Also, our DODA STEM Grant, which we just, I really didn't even catch that was gonna be all about that, so that we got, which Mr. Stripe just did a great job explaining, and then the World Language Grant. Both of those are preparing kids for what they're going to do in college. We have a lot of kids interested in STEM-related careers, and we have a lot of kids, especially with the military and the move, that come with different languages, so we're excited about offering more languages to kids starting next year. So those are things that have came out of those, that team. The last one was a learning experience team. When our learning experience team met, what we talked a lot about was, how do we create the learning experience for our kids? And we talked a lot about the generations like that we have. We have different generation of learners than we used to. You know, our learners are Generation Z and they're Generation Alpha. That is completely different than, in our staff, we have baby boomers, millennials, Gen Z, and we have, I'm sorry, yeah, Gen X and a few Gen Zs. So we have four generation of, of teachers, but then we have kids that are in completely different generations. So how do we meet their needs is where we landed. And what we talked a lot about was, how do we engage the students in the generations that we have? So some things that we have done through our Curriculum Improvement Council is we've created an initiative. One of our targeted areas for all grade bands is student engagement. So we're looking at, what do we need to do differently? We've been partnering with the Selecty Center. They look at the design qualities that make a lesson engaging for kids. So we've been doing professional development with our principals, and then every month, they're leading professional development with our teachers, focusing on things like, how do you know when kids are engaged, right? There's different levels of engagement, there's a ritual, there's a ritual engagement, there can be rebellion, there can be, so there's different ways that kids are engaged in class, and so trying to teach our teachers how to recognize those. We've also joined the League of Innovative Schools, which we're very excited about. There's only eight of us in, you know, the state of Ohio, and there's a lot of learning collaboratives in that, learning collaboratives in that, and AI and college career, CTE pathways. So we're parts of those, learning what other states are doing to get kids work-based learning. So trying to figure out how to engage kids, authenticity, you know, choice, all those things is what we've been working on in our learning experience team. For whole child development, we have three areas. Some of these were more projects, some of these were more teams. This one was really, one, it was more of a team. So what we looked at was, our elementary, at the time when we wrote our strategic plan, really needed some more support coming out of COVID with some of the behaviors and some of the mental health needs for kids. We added the supervisors of elementary and student supports to every building that year after this was written. That's made a big difference. We have two administrators in every building supporting our students. And we've also created a very robust, multi-tiered system of support. We have been recognized by, at the state level for our whole child efforts, and that looks at what all the resources we have. If a kid is having difficulty with social, emotional learning, or behavior, or mental health, we have more resources to be able to support kids, to really remove those barriers so that the kids can learn. That whole child support team is part of that, these go together, they were kinda hard to separate out. Some of the things that we've done with that, each year, we set a goal from our Panorama data. Our Panorama looks at third through 12th grade, do a self-assessment. Areas that we look at are helping every kid has an adult supportive relationship at school. We also look at self-efficacy, we want kids to be confident, and we want them to have perseverance. We want them to, the thing that they rate the lowest on that, the perseverance self-assessment is, even if it's something they care about, if they fail, they don't try it again. So how do we get them to be okay with maybe failing the first time and keep trying and keep, you know, because you learn a lot when you, when you get back up and keep going. So that team looks at setting goals for the district, and then we look at, you know, what supports do we have available? We're fortunate to have a school-based mental health grant, so we have social workers in every building. We have school-based mental health services in every building, and we're able to meet the needs, the mental health needs for kids, and we have a more robust social, emotional learning curriculum, K-12. We've also added some supports for kids that may have challenging behavior. And we have a district behavior team, so if a kid's having challenging behavior in the building, we've been trying to equip our principals with, here's some strategies you can do, here's experts in the building, but if that doesn't resolve the issue, we have a behavior team you can refer to, and we have a contracted board-certified behavior analyst that we work with a couple of days a week, who helps us observe and write behavior plans. So all those things, just to meet the needs of the whole child, but we've done a lot in three years with that. Another piece of whole child development is the safety team. Jeff Madden led this, Tyler helped out last year, and Tyler's on that team, but he kinda led it when Jeff left. Now Dale's taking it over. Some of the things that they've done that have been really good are, you know, Tyler's been talking about the audio enhancement, and that is gonna have the safety button on the lanyard that they can call for help if needed. So that's a great safety feature, in addition to the amplification, which is good for all kids. We've had upgrades with our radios, we've had a reunification drill. We've all, a team of us went and got trained on, how do we reunify if there was to be a crisis? It's a very, very specific procedure that we follow. We've went, we've practiced that, we have a whole team, we have the resources we need if we ever, God forbid, have to reunify after a crisis situation in one of our buildings. It's better to be prepared in hopes that you never, ever have to use it. Safety audits, we've done vulnerability assessments in four of our buildings, VHS, Ferguson Hall, Fairbrook, and Ankeny. And the other buildings will be done in the spring, and that's where they kinda walk through the building, and they look at any areas that might, there might be risks, or any areas that we can approve upon, and they provide a report so that the building and the safety team can talk about anything we need to do to enhance our safety measures. We have emergency classroom procedures that we've changed a little bit, how we alert our teachers that we might need to go on lockdown or what are the levels within that, and then we now have cloud access to our camera system. All of these are just safety mechanisms to create the safest environment we can for staff and students. The third area is operational excellence. This is, we were wanting to streamline parent communication, and we got Parent Square. So that was, that's been a great resource for us, so Parent Square was implemented. Ninety-nine point nine percent of families are contactable, remaining families are withdrawn. We have Parent Square groups, alumni, community, senior citizens, early childhood, trying to reach out to the community that may not be attached to a student in our schools. There was a creation of a Parent Quick Links webpage, because we do have a lot of resources and programs for parents, and sometimes, you know, it's good to have a one-stop shop as to what do I go to for what information. Website enhancements, streamlining, we've been looking at accessibility updates are in progress for our websites. Because even though, back to Parent Square, we want to have one method of communication, there are other places naturally that you log in to get like your students' grades and things like that. So we'd love to have it all in one spot, but at least all the communication you get is in one spot. Other areas in this was removing barriers to learning team, which is very related to the whole child, that multi-tiered system of support, using that Panorama data, just so we can create plans and make sure all kids are successful. It's what I talked about with the whole child. We also have the facilities planning team. As you know, we're going to be looking at a reboot on the master facilities plan. Tyler will be leading us through, and probably starting in January into the summer, on what plan do we want? What do we need with a group of community stake, or all stakeholders, right, involving the community? And he also, in the facilities area, created a capital improvement plan, started working on that in 2023, with it fully implemented last fall in 2024. Those are great things for our facilities, to make sure we're keeping those up to date on a schedule, all the improvements that are needed to keep the facilities running. Identity and culture development, there's three areas here. We have a student representative voice team. Student voice is very valuable. We came up with student advisory guidelines for K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Just what should the team look like, how many kids should be on it, what should be the representation of it? And then what should they do on it? So we had consistency. We don't have kindergartners on it, but we do have fourth and fifth graders on those teams for elementary. So it's good, they give lots of good feedback. And then within student engagement is our initiative, one of the pieces we talk about all the time is, we need to ask our students. You know, if you ask them, they will tell you, so how do we incorporate student voice into planning instruction? So that's a focus. Staff culture team is led by Darren. There, there's a staff culture survey underway, and it's helping to narrow down our focus and set clear goals. But buildings and departments do actively work to shape and sustain positive cultures and with our shared identity. The last area is the One Identity Team, led by Paul, Mr. Otten. He worked to, with a team of people, and we are one district, one mission, one creek. We have consistent logos district-wide, letterhead, signs, consistent mascot. A new mascot costume is coming late winter, very exciting. So we have transitioned to all of our buildings, you know, being all Beaver Creek Beavers. You know, we're all beavers versus the foxes, the panthers, the tigers. There are still those evident in our school, but we're not getting rid of some of the things that are already there, but we are transitioning to all having the same mascot. The last area is college career and community engagement. So like, we have a college readiness team, we have a career readiness team, we've done a lot with this. There is, we've been focusing in our AVP, our advisory period, on getting all of our kids the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. That is, you know, resume writing, different activities that prepare you for a job. Career exploration classes have been added, just a couple more as kids that may not know what they want to do. And so we've added a few of those career exploration classes, and we're very excited. We're going to be able to add some VR headsets with some transfer technology, and they'll be able to be in, like, they'll be able to weld, they'll be able to be in an operating room, and they get a look through all the different career fields, kinda simulate virtually what those jobs would be. We have our new pathway courses we've talked about before. We're getting ready to do Real Money Real World, where we simulate, you get a job, you get a salary, and then you have to, you have to pay your mortgage, you have to pay for your car payment, you have to, oh, now your kid, you know, fell, you gotta go to the hospital, now you have a bill, or whatever, so, but it helps them understand how much money you make and where your money goes, right? I think it's a great simulation for kids. We do use science, it's a career aptitude and interest survey that helps us determine what pathways, what things we need to expose kids to, what are they interested in, what do they have aptitude for. In sixth grade, we've started an interest fair last year, and it's going to continue. And then in seventh grade, we have career fairs at both Ankeny and Boyd. We didn't have them at both buildings, we do now. Now we have one at Ferguson Hall and VHS. We have a job fair at VHS, we do manufacturing day at Ferguson Hall. And then through our, the DODA STEM Grant that Jason was talking about, we're working on right now in January, hopefully opening our new classes, and it's all about STEM careers. So all of the areas within those classrooms are related to exposing kids to STEM-related careers. So we've done a lot with that one. The community parent and alumni engagement team, I mentioned it earlier, but I didn't go into detail, but Beth has worked really hard to create community, senior citizen, alumni, and early childhood groups in Parent Square, so we can get information out to them, to those groups. And then she started creating special engagement events. For example, at one of the, I think the homecoming football game, there was an alumni table, and alumni could come and get extra pom-poms, or, and just things to try to draw alumni in, to figure out where all of our alumni are. So she's got a lot of events planned in that area. Then the last one is the partnerships, district partnerships. We started a business advisory team in 2023, it's been wonderful. We've started, we get their input on things, what they think kids need to know in terms of soft skills. It's fascinating, that's a big area of need. What, you know, coming out to jobs, what are they lacking, so we can try to teach that. Our last one was, we said, okay, will you let us, will you come in and talk to our kids? Will you let our kids come and tour your facility, or can you offer work-based learning? And we had three stations set up, and everyone went to a different station, so that we can get our kids out to see their facilities, to tour, to get more exposure. So I think our business advisory team does really good things too. So that's a summary of all the areas and where we're at. And then last, the next steps, because our plan is ending. Our mission and vision and our values still remain the same, and those five themes are themes that we need to work on, but we really wanted new information as to what are our next steps? What do we need to do in teaching and learning? What do we need to do in whole child and the other, all the others? So what we've been working on is we've given students a survey, got feedback from them in those five areas. Right now, there's a survey for community, parents, and staff that we're seeking input on, so that we can write new goals and action plans for the next three years. Any questions?
It's overwhelming, it's.
It is overwhelming, and I said I was gonna keep it short, and I tried, but.
No, I mean, no, you shouldn't, you shouldn't, because just look at the work. You know, a lot of places have strategic plans and they sit on the shelves. This district utilizes it and expands on it. I mean, this is what I love about Beaver Creek. Thank you, I mean, people are amazing. You just, people can't say, we don't engage the community, we're not letting them know what's happening, our kids aren't getting the best of the best, because it's constantly ongoing.
Yeah, my try.
I will share a comment that Mike Schuman, back there in the closet, shared the other day when we were talking about this. Mike, Mike made the comment, of all time, this strategic plan has done more work than anything we've ever been a part of. So I agree, it's, because we've spread it and everybody's got a role, and that's what we're working on, so it's been great.
It's definitely a collective effort of all the cabinet team leading different projects and making sure we get things done. Okay?
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, our third and final presentation this evening, I'm gonna invite Mike up to talk about cybersecurity. It's something he loves to talk about, and data privacy.
Someday I'll get to come and talk about something a little happier, but, you know, we still have fun. So I just like to give you guys an update at least once a year on what's going on in the world of cybersecurity. This will be a fairly short update, because in two short weeks from today, we're having a cybersecurity forum and data privacy at Main Elementary, six o'clock, so everybody's invited, and you might see a few slides that remind you of that. Oh, like this one, because I like people to know. We're gonna be talking much more then. I'll actually have a number of my team come up, because a lot of people don't know all the guys behind the scenes, guys and gals, so it'll be interesting for you to hear from them, not just me. So the why, I like to start with the why I taught, that was three decades ago, but I always started with why. And same thing here, so CIS is the Center for Internet Security, and their last report said that eighty-two percent of K-12 schools experienced some type of cybersecurity incident between July of '23 and December of '24. When I started, cybersecurity didn't exist. Okay, now it's every day, it's a fight, it's sickening to think that there's whole groups of people out there that their entire job is to steal what we have so that they can make money. That's really what cybersecurity is about. So SOPOS is a leader in antivirus for years, but they do a lot more than that now. They said the average cost for an educational institution to recover from ransomware attack is a million dollars. And that's before considering paying any ransom. That's what it costs you to do the recovery, so if we were to get locked up, they say we would spend that much. I like to think we're better protected, and that's not going to happen, but, you know, that's the number, that's a real stat. So let me give you an example of things that happened. We've had a couple of things recently in this district, and they have to do with an account that was really taken over, okay, somewhere else. There's a superintendent in another school district totally, account got taken over, didn't know it got taken over. A cybercriminal sent emails from his account to other people. to other people, his contacts, including superintendents, treasurers, you know, the normal people a superintendent talks to, gave them a document to click on. They're used to getting emails from this account, and all the things we teach don't work because you can't tell it's not coming from the wrong place, because it's coming from a real account. Okay, so it's very hard to detect. You just have to look at it and say, I wasn't expecting anything. I don't need this document. That document actually had a link in it that brought up a login to Office 365. It looked exactly like the login screen, but it was a credential gatherer. So if anybody actually clicked that link and put in credentials, then their account was owned. Okay, so those are the kind of things we deal with every day. And when we talk about what we're doing, you'll hear me mention things like that. It's kind of a scary world, and it's getting harder and harder because of tools like AI that make things more and more real. And of course, the better we get at protecting, the better criminals get at finding ways around it. And it's always gonna kind of be like a sine wave where they win, we win, they win, we win. So what do we do in Beaver Creek? This is kind of the overall. It's kind of my role. I'm the director of technology. I didn't really mention that. Cybersecurity has become a big part of my job, and this is kind of the approach I take. So we have to start with saying we're doing something about this. And this is part of House Bill 96. Now, you guys will be voting on it, like it says up here, part of a Neola policy update. We have to say we have a cybersecurity program. And the program we've been using, you've heard me say it for the last few years, we're doing NIST CSF 2.0 is the version right now. That's just a framework that says, here's all the things we need to do to try to be cybersecure. So besides adopting it, in my opinion, it's very important that we're not the only ones looking at what we're doing. So we have outside reviews periodically. A couple of years ago, we had Ohio Cyber Reserve do one. We learned quite a bit from that. We've made some improvements in what we do, especially on the government side of things. And right now, we're going through one with Filament and Social Services. Naveka actually hosted that, got us a really good price. We're doing a lot of work inside of that. You'll see some results here in a moment. Okay, so we do outside results. And then we also have a team of district staff members meeting regularly. This really came from the first round. We talked about cybersecurity loosely here and there, and we did a lot of things. But it's very important to be regular. So we have it on the calendar. We meet once a week right now. That'll slow down a little bit as we get some of our projects done this year. But we set tasks, we set dates, we set responsibilities. There's no more, oh, we should really do that someday. That doesn't work in this world. You have to have it written down. You have to be held accountable to do it, and have to get it done. So, and of course, we continuously monitor threats and new laws for what's happening out there. So this is straight out of a report that we just got from Filament, okay? This is our audit this year. You can see our overall score at the top there. I think this thing works. Yeah, up here, eighty-four point five, eighty-four point six percent completed. What that means is after they asked us all these thousands of questions over a course of about eight weeks, a lot of meetings, they said we have met or partially met eighty-four point six percent of the NIST CSF 2.0 framework. That is a really high score in that world. I'm proud of that score. I will tell you, it doesn't feel like we're that high. And I will tell you, there's a lot more to do. I will always say that. So below it, you can kind of see the six areas. So it's our algorithm right there. You've got govern, you've got identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. Notice those two, ninety-seven and a hundred. I'll go to the next slide. It's a little easier to read. In the six areas, it makes it easier to kind of see where you're at and what you need to focus on the most. It makes total sense to me that we are a hundred percent in recover and ninety-seven percent in respond, because thirty years ago, when I walked into a job like this, we had backups. We've been doing backups forever, and our strategy for recovering from any disaster gets better all the time. So it doesn't shock me that that's one of our higher ones. Both of those are higher. And last year, when we did, two years ago when we did this, our lowest one was govern, because we didn't have a lot of policy in place. We didn't have a lot of written procedures. We just had kind of loose, here, we know what we're going to do kind of thing. That went up drastically. So, and you can see pretty clearly, detect is where we're working on this year. That's the lower one right now, and that's one of the ones we're focusing on. So just to give you an example of what one of the controls look like, in the six areas, detect is one of the six areas. Inside of there, there's multiple layers, and continuous monitoring is one of the layers. And there's a control, control two, which says the physical environment is monitored to find potentially adverse events. So physically monitored. So you think cybersecurity, right? You don't think physical security. Anybody who walks up and plugs a computer into that wall could be a threat. Anybody who can walk into one of our technology closets and hook into one of our switches can be a threat. That's the worst kind of threat, somebody who plugs in directly. The ones from outside, they have layers of stuff to get through if you can get in our network. So physical security is important. Yeah, Tyler, some looking at you. So we work closely together, of course, but at the high school, in our main distribution frame, our main closet, we do actually have security cameras. But one of the things they said is, well, do people check the logs regularly? Answer is no. If we see something going on, we go back and look at it. So this control says you should be checking regularly. And by the way, do the custodians check that door specifically on a regular basis to make sure it's locked? The answer to that is, I'm not sure. So I will talk to the high school principal and go, those are the kind of things we deal with. When you talk about cybersecurity, it's not all, you know, that guy in the closet who is battling digitally. A lot of it's physical, too. So what do we do in Beaver Creek? I am not gonna go through this whole list. I am going to tell you, if you come next week, two weeks from today, six o'clock, Main Elementary, you will hear a lot more about all these things. But we do all of this stuff already. We have a team approach. And I don't mean the technology team, I mean everybody. Everybody in this room who is, has an email address, including our board members, knows they get phished, they have training. Okay, we all do these things together to help. So that's training and phishing. We use Cyber Nut this year. It's new. That's a cool program. So instead of just having a video and a few questions, Cyber Nut sends everybody emails once a week. And if you get that email and you can tell, you catch it, you click this little blue squirrel, that's why it's called Cyber Nut. It's a gimmick, gamified. And it says, hey, good job, you caught it. Can you tell us why? You get three acorns for catching it, and you can have two more if you can tell us why. And so you can get on the leaderboard, but it's cool because it does it right in time. And by the way, if you open that email and you click the link, it's gonna say, hey, what did you just do? It's gonna say it nicely. It's gonna say, would you like to know why it is that that wasn't a good idea? And it will pull that email up for you and highlight things and show you the clues that would have been real for you, that hopefully next time you won't fall for the same thing. So it's a pretty cool program. I'm pretty passionate about Cyber Nut. Secure passwords, notice students is highlighted. We have our sixth through twelfth graders all now manage their own passwords, and they're secure, just like staff members are. There are at least twelve characters, at least three different types, and I'm pretty proud of that. That is a good thing. We're gonna move that down to fifth grade, hopefully in the spring. And then we'll talk from there, because you're not going to have kindergarten students as much as you want to have twelve-character passwords and all know how to type them in. It just, it's not going to work well. So we'll see where we go from there. Multi-factor authentication is something we're looking at for students as well. There are ways to do it now where they don't need their cellphone, because obviously we don't allow cellphones. We have to have other ways to do that. Backup procedures are good. Account management with HR, I like to mention, we work with all the other departments. The fact that I know every time a staff member is leaving, every time a staff member's coming, every time they're going to different buildings, that's a huge improvement in our world, because then I can go in and take care of the accounts and make sure that we are removing them and moving them and doing all the things we need when we need. So that's really cool. Automatic updates is difficult, but something we've been doing forever. Network segmentation's almost a hundred percent complete now. That's a good thing, because other systems that you don't think about, like the door controls, like the cameras, like the HVAC system, they all have technology in them. And they are known attack vectors, because a lot of times HVAC people have no idea how to update or what equipment is in there, and their stuff gets outdated, and we don't know it. So they get in that system, and they use that to get into everything else. When you segment your network, you put that stuff somewhere where it can't get to your data. So even if they do get in, yeah, you've got HVAC problems that you have to fix, but it doesn't mean they've stolen any of your data. So that's network segmentation. And there's computer timeouts. It's important to restart and to make sure they're not just sitting open all the time for people to get to. Already mentioned Parent Square. It is important that parents know how we're going to communicate, so that if they suddenly get some weird email, they say, well, that's not the way I normally get it. At least then they're thinking, what's going on? So. And TLA is Trusted Learning Environment. I could talk about that one for an hour. That is a seal we have, which is a really cool thing. It says we do value student data. There's a community forum in two weeks. I'll go through that. Latest laws, last year, we, two years ago now, it was Senate Bill 29. Now we have House Bill 96. There's a few important things inside of there. It says each political division shall implement a basic cybersecurity program. That's what I was talking about. That's why we have the board have to say, yes, we're doing this. And it says a couple other interesting things. Number two, political subdivisions must report cyber incidents to two places, the Ohio Cyber Integration Center and the Auditor of State. So if we actually have an incident, that has to be in our incident response plan. We have to tell them. Okay, that's okay. Nothing wrong with that. And the last one, if for some reason we want to pay ransomware, we have to pass a resolution. Okay, they don't want us to pay ransomware, and either do I, and I don't think anybody in this room wants to go that route. But this makes it very clear from the government officials that if we're going to go that route, we have to vote on it. So that's what the short part of House Bill 96. There's a lot more to it, but that's the technology side of things. We also have a membership with EdTech Leadership Alliance that helps us with all of our data privacy agreements. It's extremely important that we, every company we work with has to value data as much as we do. They have to say, we're protecting student data. They have to say, when you leave, within ninety days, we will delete all of the data, or we, whatever it is we agree upon, but usually it's delete and remove. All of those things have to happen. Well, ETLA is now working with multi-states. I think there's thirteen states, last I checked. So these agreements are much easier to get, which is great. And the companies are used to it now. They know if they're going to do business with school districts, they have to say, we value data. So we actually have a hundred and seven current Ohio DPAs that are signed. That's how many systems that we're using. And we have twenty in process. And our staff is well-trained on this thing called Learn Platform. They know if they want to try something new, that's great. We don't say you can't do it. We say there's a process to get it put in place. And the very first step is to submit it in Learn Platform, so that it can go through a three-part review. One part of that is student data privacy. The other parts have to do with best practice and curriculum and how it fits and all of those things, so that we're only adopting what's best for our kids in every way. This is a new one for this year. This is what's going to help us with that detect area that I mentioned, where we were lowest. So this is called a SOC as a Service is what I call it, Security Operations Center. You may have heard of that. A lot of times, you see them on the news, and it's that room that's got like thirty monitors with all kinds of things going everywhere and people monitoring it. School districts can't have these. Okay, we could have it if we want. We have it in our cyber room. It's something they sort of look at. But it is something, somewhere on here, it says 24/7/365. The day I got the call about another incident we had was a Sunday at 2:00 AM, you know? It's like, it doesn't happen when we're here. It doesn't happen when we're watching, and we can't watch everything. So this service, what it does is pretty much watch everything that we have on our systems. Right now, it's doing full scans as we install some of the early parts of it. Sentinel One is the MDR, XDR we're using. If you're a tech person, you'll have heard of them. And it's finding anything that's installed and mitigating automatically. It's watching all the traffic in the district. It's watching all the traffic in and out of the district. It is looking at all of our log files and compiling all our log files in something called a SIM, so that it can watch for anomalies. And there are dedicated staff of professionals who watch these things all the time and who take care of them before we even know about them sometimes. Okay, that is the type of service you need if you're going to be safe. And it is finally to the point where it's affordable enough for a district our size to afford it. So that is this year's big project, and it's working well. And then the bottom two, social engineering can bypass it all. Okay, there was a great presentation I went to, super scary. It was 1.8 million. The title was 1.8 million reasons to have better cybersecurity training program in your district. And the guy who presented, his name is Larry Paris. He's West Claremont Technology Director. They are probably the leaders in the state on cybersecurity and education. He comes straight out of cybersecurity, so it's not a shock. He presents all kinds of stuff everywhere. He went through the whole stack of cybersecurity stuff they had in place, much kind of like I did. They had a ton. They lost no data. Nobody got into their system. Nothing happened. They still lost 1.8 million dollars because of social engineering. In this case, it was just one simple procedure. Well, it's never simple. Somebody in the Treasury Department, there was a big project going on. The vendor they were working with emailed them and said, hey, we changed our account code. You need to send the payment to this account. And they did, without the checks and balances. Well, all of our bids are public record. Anybody can have the information and know who the vendor is you're working with. These people, these cybercriminals can recreate the emails and make you believe it's them pretty easily. And that's why Joy and her staff, they're very vigilant about this. We've never fallen for any, anything of this sort. They check everything. Same thing, Joy got an email, or Jamie got an email from me saying my account had changed. It hadn't. She knew not to change that account. We don't do that just through an email. So you can have all of these protections in place, and you still don't sleep at night because of social engineering. Yeah. So education and vigilance. I love to say vigilance, kind of a Harry Potter thing. And by the way, we have a community forum in two weeks from today. So, any questions, comments?
Thank you for protecting us. And thank you for making me a powerful person.
Thank you for being part of the team.
I appreciate that. No, I am.
Mike had dark hair like a year ago.
I did.
So what does it feel like to live under constant threat?
You start to get used to it over time. I can tell you honestly, five years ago, it was rough. But you get used to it. It doesn't, but you can't ignore it. That vigilance term is real, you know, and it's, how do you keep everybody at that level? And if you did your training this year, one of the videos was about MFA fatigue. Interesting. If you haven't done it yet, I'll give you in a nutshell. MFA, multi-factor authentication is when you get something on your phone saying, hey, is that you trying to log in? Well, now there is stuff going on out there where somebody will just do that to you over and over and over again, until you get so tired of it that you just go ahead and click the button, which you should never do, because you just give somebody access to your system. And sometimes they do it rapidly, so you notice it, and you're just irritated on the spot. And sometime you just get one a day. After thirty days, you're like, well, this must be real. And you just do it. So that is, that is what I feel. How do you keep everybody on your team? And everybody on our team is everybody who has any account in our system, every staff member, every student. How do you keep everybody vigilant? So, yeah. You do it with a smile and with a little humor.
Do you think when you don't deal with military aircraft?
I'm thankful of a lot of things I don't deal with, yes.
That would be tough. All right.
Thanks, Mike.
And that concludes presentations for the season.
Okay, next is comments. We have one person, your comments regarding the rehire of Mr. Paul Otten Superintendent, and that's Bob Trout. So right there. So Bob, I need you to state your name and address, and you have three minutes, which is speed. And should your comments require a response? Because there'll be nothing from the board tonight. But should your comments require a response? Somebody will get back to you.
That's fair. Okay, it's Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. This is in regards to the position that's of the superintendent. And I do have a concern, and I'm gonna be honest. We've got Paul on board, and that was a breath of fresh air when we got him on here. It was a big change from the previous two superintendents. So glad you're here. But my concern is that you are not willing to, or I'm assuming you're not willing to advertise the position, and I am concerned with that, because even though, even though Paul has done a fantastic job, or Mr. Otten has, that there's might not, we'd be depriving the school district of a possibly better candidate down the road. So I would seriously encourage you to consider having it an open competition, soliciting people to put it in there, and may the best person win. Because there, as I said, Mr. Otten has done a fantastic job, but I'm not going to say that there may not be another individual out there. So I'm just being perfectly honest, and I don't want the school district and the parents to not have an opportunity to at least see what's out there. If it's fair, or anything else. The other thing I had a question about is there's Ohio Rise Coast 331901 was not listed as pursuant, and that is the one section that does allow open invitation for candidates in there. in there. So I have said my piece, and I do thank you.
Thank you. There were so, there are no other questions or comments from the public. So we're going on to eight. We need, I need a motion and a second to approve the regular board meeting minutes for October 16.
No move.
Second?
Any discussion? Please go over the vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Ragono?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
items for discussion.
We have three items tonight for discussion. The first one is my item. Wanted to put out for the board to see about your availability. I put this out in my paddle to hold our organizational meeting, tax budget hearing, and our regular meeting for January. We have to have that in place before the 15th of the month, so I'm proposing to do that on Saturday, January 3rd. We've been doing Saturdays the last few years, so my, my recommendation is January 3rd, starting at 8 o'clock. We may not have to do the tax budget hearing. We're kind of waiting. We will find that out. So once we determine that, we will obviously correct it, but I anticipate what we usually do is they're about 15 minutes apart, so we'll adjust accordingly once we get information about the tax budget hearing. We would have breakfast starting at 7:30 since it's Saturday morning, and then we would begin the board meeting at 8:00. That would be the organizational meeting, and then obviously that would be followed by tax budget if we have to do that, and then the regular meeting starting probably about 8:30. But again, we will lock in the times as we get a little closer. I think, I didn't hear from, from my email that that, that date seemed to be good, so if you have a problem, let me know, and if not, I will proceed forward with getting that scheduled for January. That'll be on the December board agenda for approval.
I was going to say, that date's good for me. I just may have to leave a teeny bit early. I have an afternoon commitment out of town that I need to get to, so.
We'll try to.
Shouldn't be an issue, as long as I'm off by 10:00.
I think we should be all right. All right, the next item then is an item for discussion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Alexander. This is a Woodhall Print Services contract.
Good evening, members of the board. This evening, I'm going to speak about the Woodhall Print Services contract that is also listed as an item for approval on tonight's agenda. Our district currently has three different copier contracts. We have a contract with Woodhall currently, which has approximately 30 copiers in our buildings. We also have a contract with Canon, which has about 17 copiers in our buildings. And then our third contract is also with Canon, and it's with the Print Center. And so we're on three different contracts that end at three different times. The contract that is coming up is the Woodhall contract that has copiers in our buildings. So we put out an RFP in late August. That RFP closed on October 3rd, and we received eight bids from different vendors across the state. At the end of October, we interviewed two finalists. They also presented to us the details of their proposal, and we made the decision to accept Woodhall's proposal for the contract. So what this does is it allows us to move the district to two contracts. We will have one contract for Woodhall, which will be all of the copiers within the buildings, and then we will have one contract with Canon, which is for the Copy Center. This will provide secure printing across the entire district. It will give us one service provider within our building. One of the great things about those two items is that our traveling staff members will be able to print something on copiers in one building and retrieve it in another. Currently, if they're in a building that has a Woodhall product, and then they move to a building that has a Canon product, they have to retrieve their print before they leave the building so that they have it. The contract savings, we are going to get about a $75,000 savings over the course of this contract by going completely with Woodhall. That's about 11% of the contract. The return of machines is very expensive. The return of all of the Canon machines would run us about $17,000 a one-time cost to ship back and ensure all of the machines. Woodhall is going to cover that cost and do all of that work for us. Our current Woodhall machines would be, would stay in our buildings, and we would have full replacement. So if those machines were to break during the course of the contract, they would replace those for free, no cost to the district. And also, the, this contract, and just like most contracts, includes toner that is shipped directly to the building, to the buildings. The machines will be installed, if approved tonight, in late January, and the end of our Canon contract is February 1st. So we're really excited to be moving for, potentially be moving forward with Woodhall with this contract. We believe it's a great thing for the district in, in many different facets, especially the cost savings that we, that we were able to receive. Any questions about that contract?
Is Woodhall a local company?
Woodhall is a local company. They are based out of Springboro. You can actually see the building off of I-75. It is right near the Dayton Children's, that's off of 75.
Okay.
The service that we have had from them, we have no ill will towards Canon. They've been a great partner of ours and continue to be a partner of ours with the Copy Center. They've done a nice job for us. So has Woodhall. And so we were, we were very lucky to be able to evaluate those two vendors in addition to another six through this proposal.
So where does the savings come in?
In our lease payments, the payments that we make quarterly to Woodhall, we lease the machines. We don't purchase the machines. And so every vendor uses different leasing agents, different types of machines, different vendors. This will, so the savings comes with the, with those lease payments, and then obviously Woodhall has to make a profit with their toner and those types of items, but having that included is beneficial to us as well.
Okay.
And it shows up on our door, they monitor that, and it shows up in the buildings when it's time to replace the toner. We don't have to store that toner in our facility. Any other questions?
That was my next question.
I'm sorry?
That was my next question.
I'm, I'm learning how to read your mind, Gene. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Our next item for discussion is a proposed modification of a current position that we have, and I'll turn it over to Darren.
Good evening. As you may have seen in looking at your board report, we have the notification of retirement of one of our administrative assistants here at Central Office. And in looking at the opportunity to evaluate that position, and that is the modification that Mr. Otten is talking about, modifying that current position as we look to replace that individual. And what we've seen is, over the time in the position, that position has become very specialized in dealing with special education records. And so what you have tonight is a job description called Case Manager, Special Education Records, that focuses on that growing responsibility of accurately maintaining special education records for the school district. And with that is an adjustment to the current salary schedule so that, to include that title in that position. The idea would be, this is an item of board discussion this evening, and then we would look to post that position, that modified position tomorrow, and begin the search process for the replacement, and then bring the final job description and salary schedule to the board with a name and a recommendation at the December board meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. That concludes items for board discussions.
Financial reports and a motion is second to approve the following. The October 2025 financial reports, fiscal year 2026 amended certificate of estimated resources and appropriations. Omni and TSA CG compliance services agreement to approve the Omni and TSA CG compliance services, whereas Beaver Creek City School District sponsors certain voluntary retirement programs under Section 403B, 457B, 401A, and other related plans of the Internal Revenue Code, IRC. And Omni TSA provides retirement plan consulting, compliance, administration services to employers for such plans. The parties agree that Omni slash TSA shall act on the third-party administrator for Beaver Creek City School District's plans as of January 1, 2026.
Move.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes. Always. As we look at our monthly financial reports, we are 33% of the way through our academic year. At this point, we've collected 45 and 1/2% of our revenues, and we have spent 32% of our budget, so we're right where we need to be. I do, I know you guys love this, I have a legislative update. Are you surprised?
No.
No, you're not, I know. I mean, I think eventually these are going to go away. I hope so after the end of December. So House Bills 186, 335, 129, and 309 were amended and approved by the Senate yesterday because they were amended by the Senate that required the measures to return to the House for concurrence. The House concurred at 1:00 a.m. this morning, and they passed all of them. These bills now head to Governor Dewine for final action, including potential vetoes. As a reminder, House Bill 129 includes all existing emergency and substitute levies into the 20-mill floor beginning January 1, 2026. This bill was amended that a district may renew both substitute and emergency levies. That was one of the things that we wanted, so that's great for us. As fixed-sum levies, they will not be called emergency or substitute levies, they'll now be called fixed-sum levies. They can be renewed for up to five years, and they may be further renewed after that. Great news for us. Because substitute levies collections grow with new construction, unlike the emergency levies, they will only be able to be renewed as fixed-sum levies up to the amount raised in the substitute levy's final year. So we're allowed to put levies onto the ballot 18 months before they expire. And part of the new language is, is you have to put a dollar amount in there. Well, I'm not going to know what the dollar amount is for that last year of collection. So that's one of those technical things that they're going to have to work out, because certainly I won't, the county auditor won't know the dollar amount, nor will I. So that, that's going to be interesting. Also, the rollback was preserved for any fixed-sum levies that were approved before 2013. So that was another, you know, amendment that we were wanting. That being said, though, House Bill 186 made amendments to those rollbacks. And this is where it got kind of crazy, is, so they're passing all these House bills, and they're almost contradicting one another because there's so many of them coming. So House Bill 186 caps the growth on the 20-mill floor using the rate of inflation with a retroactive credit, now that did go through, for homeowners that applies to 2023 and 2024 reappraisal counties. Green County was a 2023 reappraisal county. So there is going to be a retroactive credit to our homeowners. The school district will be partially reimbursed for this retroactive credit with funds saved by the state because the state is going to cancel the 2026 sales tax holiday. That is normally in August, right before school starts. So they're going to cancel that sales tax holiday, and the money that normally they would have paid out or lost in sales taxes, they're going to use to partially reimburse the school district. And this next part was all new. I had not seen any of this language beforehand. I think it got added yesterday. The amendments to House Bill 186, it creates three separate rollback structures for Class 1 properties, which is residential properties. The 2 and 1/2% owner occupied rollback will increase incrementally to 15.38%. And this is not reimbursed by the state to us. So that is something that will, the owner occupied will receive that 15.38% rollback. And the 10% non-owner occupied residential will phase out to 0%. So that 10%, it's going to phase out to 0% by 2029. And then the agricultural will continue to receive the full 10% rollback. I have no clue how that's going to impact us. I'm not going, I'm just, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that one. House Bill 309 allows the county budget commissions to reduce any voter-approved levy except debt if the revenue is deemed unnecessary or excessive. A public hearing is required before any reduction, so we will be able to go in and give testimony as to why we don't think that should happen. Renewal levies can be reduced immediately, and new levies can be reduced after one year of being on the books, after collecting for one year. Finally, 335, House Bill 335, caps revenue growth from the inside millage to, again, the rate of inflation, and we have four mills of inside millage. That's the 10 mills that spread between the city, the township, and the school district, of which we have four mills. Like I said, I don't know the financial impact of these bills as amended. Before the amendments, I calculated the impact of both House Bill 129 and 186 at a loss of an estimated $3.1 million a year over the next four years on the five-year forecast for a total of a loss of $12 million. With the new amendments and the passage of House Bill 35, 335, it's going to take me more than a minute to calculate what that looks like now, but I assume that there's going to be an increase in loss over the 12 million. I do agree with the testimony given by the Fair School Funding Advocates that limiting local revenue, as these House bills have, without a corresponding adjustment to the state formula, does not reduce the overall cost to our homeowners. It instead shifts even more of the funding burden from the state to local taxpayers. And in all actuality, for Beaver Creek, it's going to put us on the ballot sooner for a new operating levy than what we planned. I mean, we, I mean, we didn't see it. But with what they've done, because we already know, we're at the state minimum share, they're not going to increase, I mean, at this point, any kind of funding. And in nowhere in these House bills have they said anything about increasing state funding to schools. The only thing they've talked about is limiting property taxes and other ways that we are able to receive our funding. So are there any questions about any of that? I know, it's a lot. It's a lot. So now we're just waiting on Governor Dewine at this point. I haven't gotten any kind of feel for it, and I don't know if you have, Paul, from BASSA. They're down, none of our, neither one of our organizations, OSBA, OASBO, or BASSA, are saying anything at this point about what they think Governor Dewine might do. So, so that's it.
One thing, oh, I had, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
I think Beth today put a summary of some of this on our website, so it should be on the legislation page, so that'll be on our website if you, if you want to rehash that.
Yeah, I did share all of this information with Beth, so. The Compliance Service Agreement that's on there, that's an IRS program, it replaces the third-party administrator agreement that we currently have with Plan with Ease. Plan with Ease, which originally sponsored by OASBO over 20 years ago, OASBO made the decision to no longer sponsor Plan with Ease this fall, and so instead they recommended the district's contract, you know, contract with Omni and TSA CG. So it's, it's nothing new. It's something we're already doing long ago when the IRS said, school districts, you're now in charge of dispensing 403B and 457 money and signing off on it and saying that yes, they meet all the qualifications and everything. That's when the IRS laid all of that into our laps, and then we all went to third-party administrators because we don't know all of the IRS rules, so we needed help with it. So that's what this is. So, and that's it.
That affect retirement dispar-
Does that affect retirement dispersals in any way?
No, no, I'm already signing off on those, and people are already going into Plan With Ease and, you know, pulling down their certificates so that they're able to pull out their funds as needed. So, no, it, it should be a pretty clean switchover from Plan With Ease to this new company as of January 1. I don't anticipate any, there's already some school districts that have already made the switch, and it's been very smooth. So, yeah, it should be good.
Okay, call the vote.
Call the vote. Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, and your business items for board action, I'm going to need a motion is second to approve the following. The employment salary changes, lease of absence and terminations, for certified board report and the classified board report, resolution to participate in EPC school bus participating bidding, wood hole, print services contract, and type 4 reimbursements.
Second?
Any discussion?
Just one item. I'll be brief. It's just Item 2. Just want to let you know that resolution allows us to participate with the EPC if we go out and bid for buses. So that will allow us to do that. But the other items, you're very familiar with, so.
How many buses we're going to have to share?
Depending on what the bids come back, we're looking anywhere from three to five.
Okay.
Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Rigano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
And we're into announcements. November 24th, June 28th is fall break. December 8th is the next community chat, Panera Bread, on Dayton Zine Road, that's 3281. Dayton Zine, you're from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM on Tuesday. December 16th is the next Board of Education meeting, right here at 6:30. And we're into board comments. Mr. Morrison?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank our presenters, Jason, who's long gone for the evening, but also Bobby and Mike, ton of work, thank you very much. Congratulations to our Superintendent of the Year, Mr. Otten, so congratulations there. I'd like to thank the community for supporting our school levy on the November ballot, and also thank you to the committee for their hard work to help get that passed. I'd like to congratulate all of our fall sports teams, did a great job. Special kudos to our boys' cross-country team, and Howard Russ, the state champions. Good luck to all of our winter athletes, they've already started and are working hard, so I'm sure they're going to have a great season. Congratulations to all of our National Honor Society inductees, you know, that's why we have school in the first place, so congratulations to them. I'd like to congratulate Joanne and Krista and Nathan for their successful attempt on the, on the ballot this November. Welcome, to Nathan. And I'd like to thank Clara also for putting her hat in the ring. We need to make sure we continue to have good people running for school board positions. That's not the most popular thing, but we're certainly pleased that we've got that. And then I was going to make a comment to Carl, but he's not here, so I'm going to wait until he's here in December. And then I'd just like to remind everyone, most people in this room, with few exceptions, are probably, are definitely a whole lot younger than I am, but 62 years ago this Saturday, something that changed the history of the United States took place, and that's when President Kennedy was shot, and we don't want people to forget. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Okay. Just to copy what Mr. Morrison has said, thank the people of Beaver Creek for supporting us and our continuing excellence. I think it was seen by the community that that was the value of educational system in Beaver Creek. Also, the National Honor Society, we had 99 kids across the stage. I think the largest number ever before that was 59.
What?
So it was pretty impressive, very large crowd, wonderful. And thanks, Bobby, for the strategic plan update there, it was awesome, because it's how we get from here to there, is combine the philosophy and the goals of what we stand for, and ways, and ways to get there. So, awesome, awesome, awesome. Let's see. Okay, I'm going to move over to the Green County Career Center. Want to welcome Mr. Nathan Boone. Very glad to have you up here and have the fun for making crazy decisions. Also, thank Ms. Joanne Rigano and Ms. Hunt for their, their big win. Feel very bad for, for Carl, but that's the nature of politics these days, unfortunately. So for the Career Center, we are faced, like everybody else, with expansion. We had to turn away several hundred kids last year. We're trying to address our biggest losses, I guess you might call that, and that would be in culinary arts, turns out everybody likes to eat, and the healthcare. So I think we have already decided to plan on adding on to our existing building for culinary arts and adding a whole new section for culinary arts with a larger room for things, things that we do. And also, if you have a chance, I think the green room is still open. If you want to go out and have lunch on Thursdays and Fridays, you should try it out. We have a program called She Dig, and She Dig, if you are a female and you want to get into the business of excavation, I know somebody that might be interested very much in that. You guys have any female contractors in excavation now? Excellent. Yeah, it is, their presentation is very good, and I think it's very impressive when the girls get behind an excavator or a backhoe or those kinds of things. It's pretty amazing to watch them just, "Never thought I could do this. Never thought I could do this." We had a visit with Governor Dewine at our school. Turns out, he has a grandson that is there, so he came through and did a nice tour, and was very well received. He was very excited, like everybody that comes through our Career Center, is very excited about Career Tech. We had the advisory breakfast, which Tyler and I were at. Great fun was had by all.
It was.
And it was good discussion, they broke us into smaller groups, and then we had chances to talk to the industries that have very much interest in the Career Center. And we have career awareness days coming up for our high school sophomores. Somewhere, I don't know when Beaver Creek fits in there, somewhere between December 3rd and 5th, sophomores come through, and if you ask all the sophomores where they want to go to school, they'll all say, "I'll go to the Career Center." Sadly, one, we don't have enough seats for everybody at the Career Center, and two is, academia still reigns supreme. So academia is not for everyone. Career Centers are all about the students' lives and what they're going to do in the future. So that is it. The other last thing is, we have a thing called Cross Lab, where, they got happened a few weeks ago, where the kids train, change labs. So if you're into culinary and you want to go find out about cosmetology, here's your opportunity. Or go to welding lab, and welding labs might go to wherever, one of our many other pathways that we have. So, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good, thank you. You need all that information. Mrs. Hunt?
I could go to there, could anyone?
I missed Mr. Strife was still here, but I enjoyed his presentation, and I think we offer a lot of awesome things for our kids, but I think sometimes we forget about the benefit to our teachers by having that, because you, as a classroom teacher, had a lot of it expected of you, and of course, it's even worse or heavier now, weight that our teachers carry. So for them to be able just to participate in something with their kids, and just engage with them, and not have to be on and have to be in charge of it, and have to plan and all the things, I think it's kind of a gift to our teachers and for our kids, just to see their teachers in a different light. So, love that kind of program. Again, thank you to our voters for supporting the renewal levy. Welcome to Nathan, to the board. Strap yourself in, it's always an adventure. I was able to attend an athletic signing last week. Our athletic department in the past has done it kind of seasonally, and then because we have quite a few athletes that are very talented in their respective sports, they've been broken up into smaller groups now. So I was able to attend four of our soccer players, both men's and women's, two of them going to be playing at the Division 1 level, and two of them playing, I believe, at Division 2 and Division 3 schools, which, playing at any, any level of academic, or, excuse me, athletics at the college level is really impressive. So excited for those kids. It's kind of cool when I know a lot of them, because my son's a senior, so a lot of them are people he's friends with. Tonight is meet the team night, so we're all missing it, because we're here, but the basketball program for the high school and middle school and all the way down through the youth program is holding their meet the team night tonight, which is one of my favorite things. So excited to see those guys out on the court, and then just excited to see, to participate in the Student Council Thanksgiving at Beaver Creek High School tomorrow. It's always a fun time to hang out with our students and just, just talk to them and hear about what's going on with them, so, yeah.
Okay. So I too want to thank our community for passing our levy. You're very supportive, and I appreciate that from them. We had lots of Veterans Day programs all over our district, and I got to go to two of them, the, at Valley and at the high school, and it was just amazing what these schools do, and how our kids are there, and teachers and staff to thank our veterans. And I met some great vets at both schools and the programs. At Valley, they had this program where the kids sang, they presented poems, it was great. The high school, the band, the choir sang, it was great. National Honor Society, that was great, 99 kids, lot of kids. Cross-country, I got to do their scholarship interviews again, and it is, that was the largest class they've ever had. It took us two nights instead of one, and these kids are just amazing to talk to. I mean, they come in, they're so prepared, and they look fabulous. Somebody has told them, "When you go on an interview, you better look the part," and they do, they're incredible kids. The OSBA conference, we just came back from, I thought it was a great conference, and I made new friends there. I mean, yeah, yeah, really, I did. It was a great conference, learned lots of new things. I'm, it's hard, it's hard to decide what sessions to go to, and I'll tell you why, it's because you read the write-ups on the sessions, and you say, "Beaver Creek Schools are doing this already. We're beyond what they're going to talk about." It's amazing, and our own Tyler and Joy were presenters, and it was, I heard it was a great success.
It was a great one.
Yeah, I mean, you had a standing-only room. So I mean, yeah, so congratulations to that. And with that, I don't know if any of you know, but I'm a great, I love Hallmark movies. You're there thinking, "Where's she going now?" And I could be an understudy for some of these movies, because I've seen them, oh, no, so many times. And my husband will come in and say, "Oh, let me tell you, that's the man, that's the woman, let me tell you what's going to happen at the end." They're all happy at the end, I love it, but this one particular movie, I thought about this when I was at OSBA, and I thought about Beaver Creek Schools. This one movie was called "The Blessing Bracelet." And let me just give a short synopsis, this woman is working two jobs to support her and her son. No matter how things get, they get bad, she makes these bracelets, and she gives them out to people, and she's always thankful, she touches these be every day, and, "Thank you for this and that." And I walked in Von Mar one day, and it was not advertised as a blessing bracelet, it was just there, and I said, "Oh, I've got to have this." So I bought it. And let me tell you why I brought this bracelet, I wear it a lot, but I, I have to be able to get through this now. You know, at this time of year, you're thankful for a lot of things, but I am very thankful and blessed to be part of this school district. When you think we have a Bobby Fury who makes sure all our kids have the best programs possible to meet their needs, and she does so much more than that. And then we have Bets Sizemore and Attica Reddick, who are out there making sure we are so transparent with our community. There is no way you don't know what's going on in Beaver Creek City Schools, whether it's the newspaper, 40,000 things on Facebook every day, or our parent squares, or our Instagrams, I mean, they do amazing jobs, it just blows, every time I turn. So when Jason was here, I'm like, "I saw that on Facebook. Thank you for all the hard work you do." And then there's Tyler, who's out there making sure, okay, our buildings are running smoothly, and now we have this audio enhancement, I can't wait for that to go into play. And Michael Schuman, the man that keeps me paranoid for good reasons and protects our schools, he's in the holdback there, but thank you, Michael. Yeah, there he is. And I will be at your, I will be at your forum. And then there's Joy, who I don't know how she keeps this budget straight, because she never knows what the state's going to throw at her. It's like a guessing game sometimes, so thank you. And Darren, he's got to get involved with everybody in the school district. Thank you for that, keeping everybody happy. And our school board, there's not a better school board here, because these are great advocates for our kids. They're amazing. Welcome, Nathan, to the school board. We're looking forward to being on it. And then our teachers and aides and everybody in the schools that are in the trenches every single day, working with our kids and making sure they get the best education possible. And then, there's the glue that keeps this whole just together, our rock star superintendent, Paul Oden, who, yes, is Ohio's 2026 Superintendent of the Year. You people are all amazing. This bracelet, I would need a bracelet the size of our football field and all the beads on it to thank all of you. I mean, you're, you are just all amazing people. And I feel blessed every day for everybody in this system. So thank you all for what you do. I'm so blessed to be part of Beaver Creek Schools, more importantly, I feel blessed because of all of every single one of you in this room. And I want to thank our community and our parents and our kids, because they're part of this specially blessed program. And with that, I hope you all have the best Thanksgiving ever. If you're traveling, please be safe, have a great time with your families. And I need a motion is second to take us into executive session for the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of public employees or higher advice code 121.22G1, collective bargaining or higher advice code 121.22G4. And Dale, thank you. Wait a minute, oh, yeah, here we go. And court action, ORC 12122G3, pen and litigation, I had you on my list and I forgot, and I apologize. We love you and appreciate you too, and welcome to central office. Yeah, aren't you happy?
Second.
Yeah, he's thrilled. Okay, and second. Okay, here we go.
Can we call the roll?
Call the roll, yeah.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigano?
Yes.
And we are in at 8:00. Good work, guys.